I'd say that, you know, we can give them up.
Hi, it's no.
Yeah, exactly. The whole town.
Alrighty, uh, we have enough.
Ryan, feel free to swing up and.
Cool.
Set off your, you are the agenda tonight.
I am the agenda.
Yep. Uh, but it is seven o'clock. We didn't started. Uh, Kay, would you please take role? Or do we need to do any formalities right now?
You called the meeting to order at seven, so. Your call's fine.
Great, okay. Kay, please take role.
Nicholas DeFrank is absent. Jeff Daven is absent. Nick Mission. Oh, he's there.
I'm here.
Kim McGee.
Here.
Jared Mork.
Here.
Cindy Suplesio.
I'm here.
Jesse Garcia. And Crimmer.
Here.
And Franco Palumbo.
Here.
Great, um, is this order correct? Should we do public comment for persons not on the agenda? Yeah. Anybody online? Uh, I know we're packed. Oh, it is correct. Okay. Great, uh, so consent agenda, approval of the Carbondale Planning and Zoning Commission, May eighth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes. Anybody have comments? Anything like that? No, as always, thank you, Kay. Very clear.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
So moved. Oh, we do vote, yes. I.
Hi.
Hi.
Uh, next item, uh, public comment for persons not on the agenda. Um, again, do we have anybody online? Sweet. Alrighty. Onto our big ticket item. Five twenty-two, highway one thirty-three restaurant design modifications. Um, Jared, do you need to go into anything with this or should we let the applicant?
You know, I'll let the applicant.
I'll let the applicant really talk about it. Um, I, I just want to kind of frame the, the conversation briefly. Um, what's, what's under review tonight is really just the material change. It's not any other aspect of the application. Um, and so we did provide two motion options for you guys. Um, if you want to approve it, a motion to approve. Um, if you have feedback and you're not ready to approve it, we would recommend a continuation of the public hearing and give the applicant an opportunity to make any changes to, to come back with something that could be approvable as opposed to, um, denying and requiring a new application. So I'm happy to answer any questions. A- as you saw in the memo, we threw in some of the, um, design standards and, and, uh, purpose statements of, of the commercial site and building design standards for your guys' use. Um, in this review, but you know, I really leave it up to you and the applicant. We're happy to answer any questions.
Great, uh, Ryan, do you wanna? Present your. Present your case here?
Sure, um, Ryan Lee, Form Five. How we doing tonight? So we've got five twenty-two, highway one thirty-three. As Jared discussed, this is, you know, primarily just a material change. Um, the goal of it is to change from stone to concrete in the area that is highlighted red. Um, there's a couple of reasons for that. It's to enhance constructability of the building, reduce the overall costs of construction, preserve the original earth tone aesthetic using a material consistent with the overall character of the project, um, create a piece of timeless architecture that could see a gateway project to the town of Carbondale, and then just maintain overall compliance with the UDC.
Okay.
So you'll see here, we have two renderings. On the left-hand side was the original rendering that was approved. Um, the wall question here is the stone, and then you can see here on the right-hand side, we have transitioned that to just be concrete. Um, really, it does break the bulk and plane of the mass in our opinion. It's an anchor of the building that, you know, brings its bridge element that comes out to Bed Hill as well as how that wood siding ties into the concrete mass. So yeah, I just wanted to keep it short and sweet tonight.
Great. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions, comments for the applicant? Man.
Um, on the switch to concrete, um, what finish are you going to do on that or is there any detail that you'll be providing on that or is it just we? Concrete colored slab?
It's truly just poured concrete.
Okay.
Um, natural, you know, it's a very similar tone to the stone that we had proposed originally, which is just a gray tone. But, um, the detailing is very minimal, so the, the goal is just have a concrete mass there.
Uh, how many square foot of stone is coming off for, you know, do you? Can you describe it like in relation to like the percentage of the exterior or just so I have a sense of how much it is?
Sure, it's, it's probably less than fifteen percent of overall area. Um, I'll just zoom in on this plan a little bit more. So that red, this is all a one-story wall. And then this zone here, these three walls are, you know, two-story elements. We do have an entry that kind of breaks that up. Um, that is the, the wall in question. Everything else is remaining the same as a wood siding, natural material.
Got nothing, Kim.
I, I see what you guys are doing, but I think this, the way that we approved this the first time is really the way that it should stay. Um, I feel like it. It's one of the very first things you see when you come into Carbondale, and I think that stone that we approved fit the best with the overall character of the area and really made it a handsome building. And I'm, I'm disappointed to see the proposal not to have that stone because that was one of the things that I felt was the most attractive. Um, and I think the community is pretty up in arms just kind of about this building being built to begin with. Um, so that's my opinion on it. I think it needs to stay stone.
Great. Jesse.
I was gonna say, yeah, I, I understand the change. Um, I'm sure cost, um, is, is a major factor. So I appreciate you coming back to present. Um, other than that, no, uh, no further comment at this time.
Okay. Cindy or Nick online, do you guys have comments for this?
Um, let me find my camera. I'm not seeing you guys. Um, I, I would say I, I like the, the brick too, but I think the stone's adequate. It fills all the requirements. And I, I understand the cost too, so I think the stone would be fine. I mean, the concrete's, you know, it looks fine, I think.
Uh, thank you. Cindy.
Yep.
Sorry, I, I'm, I'm sorry if I cut you off. Did I cut you off? I'm sorry.
No, you're not, you don't. I'm just not seeing my, go ahead. I'm just looking for my video right here. I think I have my.
Uh, so I appreciate all, all my fellow commissioners' comments, good comments. Thank you so much and thank you for bringing forward your change, your proposed change. I really appreciate, uh, your forthcomingness. Uh, you know, we've had projects in the past that just went ahead and did stuff. So could you just, do you happen to have a picture of the stone as it was proposed?
Can we zoom in on that, Ryan?
Yeah, I mean, it was just a general, we didn't have a specification at the time.
Was it gonna be gray? Was it gonna be red? Was it Colorado buff? Where's the quarry? What's the color of the stone? Is it varying? Just give me some general idea of what this is gonna look like other than, is it just gonna be solid gray? Is it coming from China? Is it coming from, what, what is it?
I mean, it was gonna be locally sourced. It's kind of the overall goal of this.
So kind of red?
No, not red. You know, the goal was trying to find something gray. I think that's why concrete lends itself to be more local.
Okay.
And what's the, what's the wood? What is that?
That's gonna be a pine.
Is it gonna be actual pine or is it some sort of simulated pine?
Right now, we have actual pine.
So it's gonna kind of, you're gonna stain it or is it gonna be like exactly tan like that forever? Or you think it'll weather into some other darker color or what do you think?
Um, well, right now, we're using, we've specified thermarie, which is a thermally modified pine. It is going to have that golden yellow hue to it for probably ten to fifteen years without having any other maintenance. Ultimately, you know, we would have to have a maintenance plan to restain it as it grays over time. But for ten to fifteen years, this will be the natural color of that wood.
Okay. I mean, I, I, you know, i- if, if they can actually find a local quarry that's gray, I'd be surprised, but you know, what they're saying is it's gonna be gray. Um, and I appreciate them coming and, you know, with a value engineered solution here. If they want grace, you know, I'm good with it. I would just, I would probably just suggest a pigment for the concrete to look like actual local stone, which tends to be a little more red, which might actually, you know, be more harmonious with your, with your pine. Um, if it, you know, you got some red other accents, so maybe just keep it in the keep it harmonious by adding a pigment. And that way you're kind of maybe appeasing some of the folks who really do want to see it as stone. You, you know, like concrete has a tendency to go a little green, and if you've got reds, this may be on the scope of this, but this is my, this is my two cents. Just stay in key, use pigment. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. Franco?
Yeah, I like, I like Nick's comments, but, uh, I wasn't here for the original approval. I don't know if I could speak on this, Jared, or?
Sure.
Sure. Um, I like Nick's comments about the pig, the pigmentation. Ryan, is the, uh, those like footers, kind of where the deck kind of sticks out, were those always approved as concrete footers?
Yes.
So that concrete would have been the same as the concrete that is now proposed today. Okay. And have you explored the idea of like stamped concrete?
We have not yet. It's really, yeah, figuring out this is direction that the commissioners are willing to proceed with.
All right, that's all.
Yeah, that's a good comment, actually. You know, like just get, try to get a little creative with your concrete. Just don't do like some nasty form work, Simon's work or something. Get creative. But it'll still be a value engineered solution. Just, you can do better than just, you know, Simon's, Simon's forms.
Okay.
Hey, Jared, can you say one more?
Sure.
So we're gonna have no texture on that. It's gonna be a big gray box. And then in ten years, the rest of the building is gonna be gray when the wood weathers. Right? Am I understanding the look of this? Because what I liked about it, what I thought looked so great on the original plan was all the texture that the stone brought to it. That was really an interesting element.
Yeah, I think there's a maintenance plan, you know, that we're trying to adhere to. It's not just letting the wood naturally gray out completely. And like I said, it's a thermally modified product. Um, they're claiming ten to fifteen years of true color before it really even starts fading. Uh, this north side you're looking at, which is a majority of the wood, where people will be interacting, it's not gonna fade because design gets sunlight on it, right? It's gonna be in the shade, so truly that color should be maintained. The bridge itself is actually the bridge we've sourced. Um, that's reclaimed bridge, so it's got that, you know, weathered steel look to it and, and its character, and we've also stuck with blue lamb beams, so I think that there is a lot of texture on this building. Um, we're talking about, you know, essentially a stair core that is anchoring the entire structure. Um, and there, there's multiple reasonings, not just aesthetics, but costs and constructability. You know, how do we anchor this massive bridge to the building? And we couldn't just do a wood frame wall.
But you designed it to have the stone originally, so there must have been a way to make it work, right?
You can make it work. I think that's just, you know, to be an aesthetic opinion. I agree with it. It's a beautiful material if it's used correctly, if it's thoughtful. So there's opportunities here.
Ryan, was it always gonna be a concrete core? You're just simply removing the stone from the wall now? Or what was the process with that?
No, it was originally wood framed.
Wood frame?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and like I said, it was tying this bridge element. We, once we got some approvals, we actually have sourced a reclaimed bridge. So there's some challenges to get that tie into the structure.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so in doing so, working with a structural engineer and contractor, ultimately the best way to do it was pour concrete rather than wood framing.
Have you, have you employed any other ideas to make this concrete more suitable to like the surroundings in Carbondale? I don't think we have any exposed concrete in town like this. Typically, if you see a run that tall, uh, from this bottom right image that I'm looking at, we've introduced, you know, murals or some sort of tie into the community. Um, has that been explored by your team?
We've not discussed that yet. It's kind of this, this preliminary discussion. Um, I will say the, you know, units over at Dolores are cast in place, concrete on that entire piece. Do you know what I'm talking about, by three grand? So, yeah, it's maybe not the vertical, but that's a longer expanse that we've seen in town.
Yeah. That's the only thing I could think of that would relate to it. Um. I don't have any further questions. Would we like to open up to commissioner comments? Or, I mean, to discuss amongst ourselves here? Or do we have any further questions for the applicant?
Um, it is a notice of public hearing, so. We should, uh, go through the motions of open public hearing.
Okay, uh, I'd like to open this up to public comment for those joined virtually. Uh, do we have anybody? I think you have to go to participants. Okay. Uh, great, well, when, with that, I'd like to entertain, um, like, can I just close the public comment?
Yeah.
I was like, oh. Let's close that. Uh, and then now, right, sorry, this is the first one. Now it's commissioner. Comments, okay. Great. Um, and you said you had one more question or did you?
It's, it's a question for staff, um, because we had discussed whether I could go back to their original application. Um, and I did go back to watch part of that meeting. Am I allowed to talk about what I saw in that meeting or no? Okay, um, because I did go back. That was a really long meeting, but luckily I scored and only had to watch like an extra twenty minutes. Um, because the stone did come up with the commissioners as being important to the design. Um, and you guys did specifically talk about, uh, projects changing materials um, and that it was aesthetically important. Um, and there was discussion about what kind of stone will be used, um, whether the pattern shown was going to be uh, what ended up on the building. Um, and there was mention, uh, from the applicant that they were going to look for local sources of the stone. Um, so I just wanted to mention that when I looked back at the minutes from the meeting and as well as watching, you know, a ten-minute chunk, it did feel that it was important to the commission at that time, um, what the materials were. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, but I understand the need for value engineering too, so I, I, I don't know. I guess we have to decide whether, you know, concrete is acceptable with, um, being on our other main thoroughfare.
Right. I think, I think that sort of touches on the subject of, um, apparently I'm playing music. I think that touches on, uh, a few of my concerns as well, but, um, we're looking at this as a gateway, right? This is two gateways in one site. Is this something that this commission feels that, you know, are we, are we comfortable with this material change at the one thirty-three gateway into our town? It's, it's right there, you know? Uh, same with the Rio Grande Trail, you know? I'm getting no's over here. Um.
I just think it's an important building and I loved the way it looked at the beginning and I feel like the town will be more accepting of it that way because it fits in.
Right.
It, it just. And that's part of the code.
Mm-hmm. And I, uh, and I think you're quoting me in some of those.
Actually, um, yours was, um, that you want, wanted to see to change to something like stock.
Yes.
It was a no stock of?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I would be open to ideas that weren't just poured concrete. Um, I'd love it to have a little more texture. And I know this isn't a technical word, but like some gravitas, because it is like, you know, the entrance corner of that building. You can use that, you know, in your work. Because it does look lovely with the stone and with the train trestle and um, but again, I mean, stone's expensive. I've seen that go quickly when value engineering and I completely understand that.
Um, I definitely appreciate, um, all of the commissioners' comments. Um, really good insight that maybe, um, you know, not all of us looked at or considered. Um, I think the applicant, to my understanding, has done a, a well-intentioned, um, replacement due to cost. Um, so I, I do see that the intent is there. Um, and I do like the ideas thrown out by both, uh, Franco, Nick and, um, Jared as far as maybe meeting us in the middle with some sort of stamped concrete or perhaps an opportunity for a local artist to do a mural. Um, I, I don't know if that's something that they'd be willing to explore, but, um, I know when Chester came in, um, he was really about the community and so maybe an idea, um, to kind of find some middle ground. But I do see the intent, um, in keeping light color for what was previously approved, so. Thank you.
Nick or Cindy, do you guys have any further comments? Or anything to discuss amongst commission?
No, I feel like, um, like I said, I think it's a, I don't think it looks, I mean, I know it's not the stone, but I, to me, it's not that big of a difference. I think it would look fine, truthfully. But if they wanted to, if it explored some other, um, stamping or dyeing, would, that might look good. I'd wanna see it also, I think everybody else would, in a rendering like this, just to get a feel for it. If, if they went in a different direction.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I think what I said earlier is, is what I'm still thinking, you know? You gotta do something more than just raw on, on, you know, raw con- concrete is gonna be not in keeping with the rest of the building or in, or in keeping with the, you know, adjacencies or context. Um, I, but it's a very simple fix. I think if you just, you know, added some red pigments, um, you'd be in keeping with First Bank across the road. You'd be in keeping with, you know, your own palette. You're just, I don't know that you're really gonna be in control of the outcome unless you do some, some pigmenting and some, you know, understanding what those aggregates are gonna be. Um, and, and what your form work is going to be. You know, Simon's forms, they have several different, you know, types of molds that you can choose from. Just, just do your research on concrete, you know? And maybe, I mean, I don't know if the, the rest of the committee feels, you know, like this might be a good idea, but you could either provide a mock-up of the concrete in advance or bring us a sixteen by sixteen sample of the concrete, you know, showing the exact aggregate color, size and pigments and form that you plan on using. Any concrete sub worth their salt will offer that to you. So it wouldn't be hard for you to bring it to us.
Okay, thank you, Nick and Cindy. Um, Franco, I know you weren't really a part of this, but, um, anything that you'd like to discuss with the commission on this?
No, I definitely agree. This is a similar form to the bank across the street. Um, the, the previous one, the A and, A and B, yeah, bank. Um, with their stone kind of silo looking thing on the front. So I always think, you know, if it's worthwhile to, you know, explore to the maximum extent possible, a similar form and a more cost-effective um, process, you know, to work with you, but also meet us in the middle. That's my opinion on it.
Okay. Uh, so then my, my question to the commission now is, do we, are we seeing this as something that we'd like them to bring back to us with our comments? Or is this something that we'd like to vote on approval or denial tonight? We have those two options presented in front of us on our packet, and I think, um, yeah, I think that's what we need to decide on. Are we voting to continue or are we voting to approve or deny?
I lean towards continue to see if they can come up with a creative solution, um, that's still within their budget. Um, I think Jesse mentioning murals, I mean, gosh, the town would go crazy for that. Um, so I, I think I think we could do better than just the poured concrete, so I would lean to continue.
Okay. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Well, should we vote on whether we want? Okay, okay, okay. I mean, we could also approve with conditions. That's a third option. You know, just to keep them moving so that we don't add cost to these guys. Is that an option?
You just turned it off, I think. Oh, greens. I can't see the green from this angle.
Yeah, this is a, a quick note for this, you know, commission. We are trying to be upfront and honest with what we're, we're doing here. We do want some direction because right now we're kind of in a standstill. You've seen some movement over there. The building's been demolished. We're now not being reviewed for permit as we work through this and some other areas with board trustees. So solid direction of what we can and cannot do is what we're really looking for. You know, personally, I don't, you know, th- this is a more of an opinion piece, right? Like it's a big architectural element. Um, but again, I think the concrete does lend itself to be very similar to that stone. But if we could get solid But if we could get solid direction of what we should be doing, or if there's changes, that way we can. Really button this up as a group.
Okay, direction so far has been that we would like to see texture applied to the stuff, uh, to the concrete. A color, a tinting, uh, some sort of treatment so that it is not one. Solid vertical facade. There's gotta be some development within that, I think. A one color versus multicolored stones where you might get browns and things like that. To me, they don't match exactly. So I want, if we're gonna have. Concrete proposed, uh, again, I think that was a huge element to this and there needs to be movement. There needs to be color. There needs to be. Some sort of. Uh, collaboration with the local arts department on what we can do to make that not one giant gray item. In the design, that seems to be the collective thought between the commissioners.
Can I, m- m- may I offer a suggestion that we that we? Discuss approval of the minor site plan with the condition that they bring forward a sample at the next meeting?
Yeah, that sounds good.
I don't want to vote on approval if we're already thinking about continuing, right? Wouldn't that just be what we're expecting to see?
Yeah, if I if I can ask a question, Nick, wh- what is your kind of rationale for approval with conditions that come back? Is it to provide? Sufficient direction so that a building permit review process can continue or?
I think that's it. Yeah, I think I I I really don't want to delay the project, um, and they're miles away from finishes. I mean, granted, I should rephrase that, they're miles away from finishes, except that the concrete element is poured in place. And is finished when the forms come off, so, you know, I need, we need to understand there are critical paths to some extent, like, are they planning on pouring? Does the applicant intend to pour within the next two, two weeks or four weeks?
No, they don't even have a building permit.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so then, so then there's no reason why we shouldn't be in a solid position to look at samples. And allow their approvals process to continue in a linear progression. I think we could probably craft language that would allow both to happen concurrently.
So I I think if there's general consensus that the kind of material change to concrete is acceptable. However, you're working on what those finishes and colors are, I think we would feel comfortable enough moving the, uh. The the building permit application forward as that details. Further vetted out with this group because the structural elements that are gonna be reviewed by the building department. The plans that are being reviewed by the building department are are not gonna materially change. Um, like a wood frame wall to a poured in place concrete wall. So, um, you know, I I think if that's your goal, but you still don't feel comfortable with the outcome, I think. That could be kind of a risk tolerance that that the town's willing to take, if the applicant's willing to take that. Alternatively, you know, you could craft a condition that says yes to concrete as a material. With the condition that the the finish of that material comes back for final review.
Yeah, subject to, subject to samples of review and approval of samples, you know, to this body.
I I think either way can be a, um. Effective step to kind of move this forward and it's really just kind of a. How firm are you guys on concrete being an acceptable material for that element? Um, if the finish is right, as opposed to saying, gosh, we just couldn't find a finish that was acceptable and we. Want to go back to to stone or look at some different material. I think that's kind of a. A a question for the commission.
What's the delta on the cost?
It's probably two, two and a half times cost easily.
Yeah, I mean.
Just everyone's aware, we've been, you know, tasked with, I mean, contributing to undergrounding funds for this project as well. We've been working through that with Jared Elliott and Board of Trustees. So it's not just like we're doing this because, well, it's just a a move. There's been a lot of areas that we've had to. By we, the owner, had has had to, you know, fork up some cash to the town.
Well, not to mention tariffs and all the pressures that the economy is, you know. Putting on the developer as well. Yeah, no, it's a serious matter. I imagine there are probably other cost-cutting. Components to the project as well that, you know. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I think we've kept, you know, majority of the things true to the nature, right? You look at these two renderings, it's nearly identical.
Yeah. Okay, I I mean. I've said what I have to say. I I don't know what the rest of my my committee members think, but I I think that, you know.
Ryan, I have a a question here then. So if this were to stay stone. What would then be your structure within to attach the bridge? It sounded like to me at the beginning of this conversation that it has to be concrete regardless. So the conversation now. Is, are we cladding the concrete or are we leaving it bare? So the the two to three X, two to two and a half X delta doesn't really seem to fit very well within that. Do you have alternative strategies besides concrete for this element? Like, how are we going to attach this? Otherwise, because to me it would be steel framing, right?
It needs steel. I mean, I think that cost is accurate because you're looking at, you know, adding waterproofing, lath, mortar. The material and then you're adding labor, you know, labor is adding a massive amount of cost, right? So we have labor shortages in this valley. It's not like anybody's gonna lay out stone for this.
Yeah.
So I I get where you're coming from, but we typically do need a concrete or steel structure to hold this bridge. Um, but there is a ton of added costs to just add stone to the concrete wall.
And that is still two to two and a half X to you?
Correct.
I mean, personally, from my standpoint, I still stick by my original statements in our first application. I feel like if we were to vote for. Conditions of approval, right? We we had these conditions laid out in the first time. We had this discussion the first time. And they came back. To me, I don't think we're voting for approval with conditions. I'm, we're voting for. Approval or a continuation in this, I think. I think that's where this is heading.
Well, continuation is gonna delay their review process.
I understand, Nick.
Okay, I'm sorry. That adds cost. You know?
Are they still reviewing the rest of the project for structural and everything else, or are they?
No, we we paused the, um, we paused the building permit review. Until after tonight's meeting to see where this commission kind of netted out. And again, if. If generally, concrete is an acceptable. Material, um, and we're talking about how it's finished or how it's clad, I think we would feel comfortable moving. The building permit review process forward. It's still not gonna be issued in two weeks. So, you know, I I I think there's a little bit of that, um, but also. I understand if if you guys want to know exactly what that finish is and what you're approving before. Making a final approval. Um, I I think both. Both an approval with conditions and a continuation are. Acceptable based on what I'm hearing from the commission.
Is there a way to keep or or to? Direct the staff to continue their review while the concrete facade is, you know, presented with an alternate?
Yes, I think we can, we, based on what I'm hearing tonight, um, from the majority of the planning zoning commissioners. I think we feel comfortable that we could. Restart that review as this board makes the final determination on that material.
Great, so Jared, we could continue this to the next meeting, the twenty-sixth. And town staff could review permitting.
Correct.
And we can come to a final determination. At the next meeting.
Correct.
Great.
So can I move to continue the public hearing?
If we have a second?
To the, to June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five? Can I do that right there?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I move to continue the public hearing to June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All right, Kim made the motion and has a second. Do we have a commissioner vote?
Yes, great, need a vote. All in favor?
All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed?
I opposed.
I oppose.
Passes two, four, five to two. If I did math correctly.
So continued.
So it's continued.
I don't know if Franco can vote.
Franco and Nick were opposed. Um, so yeah, we we can have this reviewed, um, in two weeks and we can talk with Ryan about what what we can come back with the. Maybe, um. Address some of the comments that were brought up tonight.
Great. Alrighty.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks. Next item, staff update.
Franco joined. Yeah, so we had a, uh, uh, the Board of Trustees met on Tuesday. They reappointed Anne and appointed Franco. Um, as alternates to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so. So with that, I believe in Kay and Ellie, correct me if I'm wrong here, there is a mandatory. Boards and commission training on Monday?
Twenty-third.
Third? On a Monday. The twenty-third of this month, um, so, you know, I encourage you guys all to attend. If you can't, please let, um. Please let Ally know. She's kind of tracking this, you know, we understand if there's extenuating circumstances and we can try to figure out another way to get. The mandatory training, um, with you guys, but I think really the goal of it is. Is to kind of provide some some general overview, you know, Robert's Rules of Orders, how to run effective meetings. Things like that, um, what the other boards and commissions are doing, and and it's more of a general training. I don't know if a lot of the other boards and commissions necessarily get that training. Because of the decision-making authority that the Planning and Zoning Commission does have on behalf of the town. We do that training with all new members and we also cover a lot of the the legal issues such as bias, conflicts of interest. Um, open meeting laws, things like that. And so there'll probably be some redundancy with this meeting to what you guys all train or got trained on, but. You know, I know for some of you, it's been, you know, a couple moons since that training, so it never hurts to have a refresher. Yeah, I think. That's probably the big upcoming staff update tonight, today and tonight and tomorrow. Um, the town manager finalists are being interviewed by the public and the Board of Trustees, so.
Is that open to sit in on?
The interview by the trustees. I don't believe so.
Because I know they said there were two interview boards going at the same time or something.
Yeah, and there's a. There's a community one, so they did have one with department heads this afternoon and they're gonna have a community one. I don't think those are open to the public to sit in on.
Is it executive session or?
I think it's, it's not a, yeah, it's not a noticed meeting, so. I might have to ask a question and get you guys a.
Just curious, because I I. Went to the meet and greet and didn't get a sense of how they manage in terms of, you know. I got a sense for their personalities and their experience, um, but I didn't know if the. Interviews were open to the public at all, so I was just curious.
I I wish I had an answer. I'm kind of in the dark on the the process to a degree, so. Um, I can, I can reach out to a couple people and see if I can't get you an answer this evening. Because it's tomorrow. With that, it does look like we're gonna have a meeting in two weeks. One of the upcoming agenda items will be, um. Town staff requesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission initiate a Code Text Amendment for accessory dwelling unit. Codes, so that might happen in two weeks. That might be July tenth. Um, but we hope to to make that request of you and then have a formal. Public hearing scheduled sometime later this summer and really begin in earnest those. Code amendments. Trying to think of any other.
So that's that's for us to request for staff.
Direct us to to do that. So our UDC, um, requires that code amendments be initiated by. Either the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Board of Trustees. We staff can't initiate it and the public can't initiate it, so we are just asking you to. Formally tell us to initiate that.
Is is that something that has to be next?
Um, yeah, because I do want to provide a little bit of context with, you know, why we're doing this, so it's not just a. At the end of a meeting, um, just for the public record, so.
This is a step one in the broader. Project of.
Cor- correct, and and certainly I think one of the important things would be. You know, what do we have and and what do you want to see at a public hearing from us on this topic? And so that would be kind of part of that discussion. I'm giving this direction on on things that you'll need to understand, make a informed, educated decision on. Accessory dwelling units.
Great.
Just want to give you a little heads up on that, um, but I think that's all for staff updates. Do you guys have anything?
No. Commissioner comments? All right.
I'm just glad I'm I'm here for three years and don't have to do an interview again.
We'll find a way to get you on a interview.
Well, I finally didn't have an out of out of body experience when I was doing the interview, so that was, that was a win.
Great, well, uh, this meeting's adjourned then. Thank you, everybody.
What time is it? Nope, nope. Chair can just adjourn. We're Bobby's rules, not Robert's.